Good evening, everyone. I will call our work session to order of October 25th, 2022. We have two items to discuss. The first one that is pulled up is the Community Gardens pilot proposal. The second item is feedback on staff's recommendation to migrate J.D. Edwards to a new financial software package for our ERP and Logis contracts. I will pass it to Assistant City Administrator Sack.
Thank you. What we have is, of course, the staff's looking for feedback for migration of J.D. Edwards to a new software of Oracle. And I have Tanya here. She's from Logis. She's the Director of Administration and Finance. So I'll let Tanya talk first, and then I'll recap and kind of look at the question that the city.
Can we do next?
Can you hear me okay? Okay. Thank you for inviting me to attend your meeting. They've asked that I give you a brief update on our process and what we have happening at Logis. We're very excited to be wrapping up an 18-month, almost a two-year project. The membership brought forward in regards to our U.B. application and our financial H.R. software, which is J.D.E. A few years back, it was recognized that the software was more than 20 years old, that it needed to be updated, and it was time to either go through a transition with Oracle in itself or go out and do an RFP process. Due to the dollars involved and the complications or the complexity of the software, we chose to do the RFP process and go and evaluate software all the way through. We hired the National GFOA as our consulting partner, who helped facilitate and streamline the process. And then we invited all of the members and their staff to participate in many, many meetings in regards to collecting requirements, viewing, demoing software, and so on. We also put together and requested volunteers for an eight-member ERP selection team. I think you have this letter. Sorry, I think you have this letter that we provided to the city, which kind of outlines this as well. And the eight members were made up of various member cities and composed of either finance directors and/or H.R. directors, so a good cross-section. And we went through the process, put in hundreds of hours across all of staff time, consultants, and the membership. We believe we're in excess of 1,500 collective hours in the process. We feel very good about the process. It was very thorough. We looked at Tyler Munus, Oracle, and, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank, Workday. But after going through all of that, on the ERP side, they have elevated Oracle Cloud as our ERP solution and SpryPoint Cloud Utility Billing for the utility billing software. So that's how we got to this point. And then we included, and I believe you probably have this in your packet as well, the implementation costs and the, for Oracle Fusion and the U.B. software. And I'm, I don't know how much more detail you'd like me to go into, Sack, or?
Much.
Is that good? And I'm, you know, open to questions and can help answer any questions as they arise.
Thank you. So just for the council members that came in, we are not talking about Community Gardens pilot project. We're talking about the recommendations for our ERP system and contract with Logis. Mary.
Thank you. I just had a timeline question because it seems to make sense to me that we should update our software, and that, I have no problem with that. I was just wondering what the timeline is and how long you think it's going to take.
Yeah, we're, each city has to decide in terms of just the timelines that they want to start the integration process. Of course, we want to make sure that just because we have, our staff levels are really low right now and just the staff's capacity, we want all the bugs to get wriggled out first. We didn't want to be the first city. But we have talked about timelines, and we're looking, we had a meeting today, and we're looking sometime in, probably about in the third quarter or four. I don't know how the timeline in terms of integration process is still, but it's going to be dependent on the size of the city and the complexity.
So what we're asking each city, to Sack's point, is as they provide their letters of intent, to let us know their preferred timeline and their feel for their readiness. We'll do a readiness assessment with the staff, make sure they understand what is all involved, the timeline, and that they're ready to go, so that we're in a really good place.
Yes, like Tanya mentioned, our system is currently, it's not working for the city and it's not going to work for us in the future. So we have had a number of staff be a part of some of our demonstrations, and our finance manager is also part of that, and we also had our H.R. manager. Our system is not only the financial software, but utility billing. They also include H.R. module, too. And of course, just like anything new, you're very apprehensive about changing, right? And we went into it thinking, you know, we already have an H.R. software that we're currently using right now, and it works really good. Every city is using it. And when my H.R. manager went through the module demonstration, she gave back to me the next day, she's like, "Can we do this tomorrow?" So it's really going to help not only streamline some processes, but make a lot of things more efficient. And there's a lot of reporting that in the past, we've kind of had to just, and now this, after the H.R. manager went through the demo, now she's like, "Yeah, they can track it all for us. It's just manual, it's automatic. We put it in, they track it." And then, same thing with, just a lot of some of our leads, too, regarding like family medical, you know, before we were tracking through our next Excel spreadsheet. Now we can track through with actual software and H.R. modules. So a lot of this just kind of streamlined our process and makes things a lot more efficient for our.
Thank you. I have a couple questions. So I don't feel like the council has been too much in the weeds on these types of things. I know that we have known that there's a lot of different areas where we need to maybe switch our investments and focus from where we've been. And I know our technology and I.T. infrastructure is one of those areas. But if I can get some context from either staff or from Logis, a couple questions. I had thought that a while back, we had talked about doing an audit of our I.T. infrastructure. I just wanted to clarify if that audit was done or not. And then can you explain Logis? I'm a little confused. So they're the company that provides the ERP system? And kind of how does that, how does that connection work? I understand Logis did an RFP for an ERP, for ERP systems. Did we do a search for continuing with Logis or not, and why or why not? And so I just have some big-picture contextual questions. Maybe I won't keep asking them, but if we could just start with some of those?
Yep. So Logis is a local government informational system. So they provide our I.T. services in terms of support. We have an I.T. department, but in terms of other software, for example, prior to this, we had it for police, we had for fire. So Logis provides all our backups, too.
Okay. So that's what I thought. So they are the provider. So was the city not happy with the Logis offerings, right? I had understood that they were pretty clunky and slow, and so...
J.D. Edwards, the software program for the financial software, it's aging, and it shows. And there's a lot of inefficiencies that we do manually with J.D. Edwards. And there are a number of cities within the Logis group that decided, you know what, we need to take a look at different software, similar to what we're doing right now with even our planning software. Currently, right now, we've decided to branch off from Logis on that point and look at CitizenServe. But I think Logis will probably, in the future, will have to take a look at that, too, because PIMS is aging also.
So, okay. So did we do the assessment of if Logis is the right service provider for software? I mean, that's the decision that was made here, right?
So to answer one of your questions, we have not done the independent assessment because we wanted to get the M365 and prioritize that. That's what we did instead. We're still planning to do it, and we still have a contract, and we're ready to go with it. Right now, we feel like it would be a huge undertaking for us to try and provide all of our own I.T. And right now, the market is so tight that trying to build that department and do this work ourselves, when we're already trying to play catch-up, would be too big of an undertaking at this time.
But there's other providers outside of Logis that we could have considered, or is that not the case?
So Logis is a consortium, and they're providing, it's like, it allows you to have a smaller I.T. department because they're providing a lot of your I.T. needs. There are some programs that we're moving away from. For example, the dispatch, you're correct, we did move away from Logis on that, and we're going to Tyler Technology as part of the Police Department. And that's one of the reasons we participated in these demos for the financial software and also for the H.R. software. And we were really pleasantly surprised. I mean, it was, I shouldn't say pleasantly surprised. We were very impressed. Some of the things that we have been trying to do to patch the J.D. Edwards is we have access problems, we have Excel programs, we have a reporting and budgeting overlay program. We've been trying to use LaserFiche to fill these gaps. This is going to be software that's comprehensive, so that we don't have to have all of those patches. And that's one of the reasons that we're hoping to do it more quickly than we thought.
Did you want to jump in? Or no?
Yeah, of course. Yep. So I'll just add, we're not a company. We're a local government. Think of us as a co-op. We're made up of our membership.
Okay.
So we provide these services out to many, many cities in the metro area, counties, other consortiums, J.P.A.s. So we really don't like to think of ourselves as vendors. We like to think of ourselves as an extension of their departments, and I think that's what they're indicating, is we fill and backfill in for them. In regards to the software that we're talking about here, like they're saying, the membership decided it was time to do something different and went through the process of evaluating with the National GFOA, National Government Finance Officers, and went through that whole process. And this is the software that the membership has decided to elevate forward.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just trying to connect some of these dots.
I completely understand.
And then, another question. So can you just talk a little bit about the contract and the proposal? Because this is specifically for an ERP, this is for ERP system, if I'm understanding correct. So I'm trying to think of, okay, we haven't done the big-picture assessment yet, and I'm, you know, I'm thinking about starting with a bigger-picture assessment and a strategy that informs the tools versus focusing on a specific tool for a specific thing. And so I'm trying to understand how those decisions are made or the connect in that way, if that makes sense. I'm trying to connect at that level.
So the, one of the main purposes of the I.T. evaluation is more focused on what we have in the systems and some of our vulnerabilities versus where Logis is a provider of services, where like Katie mentioned, we're trying to fill in those gaps. And right now, we have an I.T. team of five. But if we, you know, there are options. There are cities that do have their own I.T. department, but then you start to take a look at what is feasible for the city in a city this size. Because with a full, with a full I.T. department, you know, you're going to need programmers, you're going to need security programmers also. So there's a lot of different areas, and Logis provides support on all those ends, but they also provide hardware support for our servers, for our backups. So there's a lot of those things that you have to take into consideration, too.
And I get that piece. And I don't, I'm not trying to say that we should build out an I.T. department, but I'm thinking more about the strategy for our city's I.T. infrastructure overall and like thinking about that strategy, big picture, and kind of thinking through where we do, it sounds like immediate threats and security and cybersecurity is a huge issue, which makes sense. But I'm just thinking more of the strategy and then the approach we want to take for advancing that strategy. Where's the baseline? Where are we at now? Where do we need to strengthen and improve overall for our I.T. infrastructure, whether it's vended out or not? You know, I mean, I understand that piece. So I'm not sure if I'm communicating my point exactly, but that is what I thought the assessment would be of our I.T. infrastructure, to then inform the changes that we need to make, if that's making sense.
Most of that is going to be more focused on, like, hardware needs of the city, in the various buildings, and part of it is also software needs for the different departments. But it wasn't really going to look at the services provided by an organization or company.
Okay. Sean?
Yeah, Maria's questions are actually really interesting. I hadn't thought through some of those things before, but I think you raised good points. I guess I'm just on a very basic level, like, how do you know that this is a good piece of software when we don't have alternatives? How do we know that, you know, it's a good piece of software? That's like, and it is, I mean, it is a 10-year commitment, which is a little bit concerning if, what if it is bad? I don't know. What was your process in lieu of something formal, like getting multiple proposals for different vendors?
And I think I kind of referenced in the staff report, too, just in terms that we could go with. And Logis is going through the process and having an eight-person group that are experts in their field to analyze the different vendors. You know, otherwise, in the city, we'd have to go through our own RFP process, and we don't have the expertise to evaluate the programs or even the time to evaluate the programs, where Logis and the eight-person committee or group has already done that for us. And they, like Tanya also referenced, you know, they did hire consultants that specialize in that evaluation, which we would probably have to do the same thing, too, if we went through that process. And then we would have to put the time commitment to that, and then also the financial commitment to that, too.
So I guess I'm, just to clarify then, so you're saying Logis had this rigorous process of eight experts who did this, and we're accepting Logis's recommendation because they're trustworthy. Is that right? Or do you mean that there was a local determination of that?
So, and I'll let you speak as well, but so it's not just Logis. It was all the members of Logis.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, this collective effort is what I mean.
Yes, it was collective efforts, and it was the users that were testing and selecting and narrowing down all of these different softwares. So yes, we do have confidence in the process that Logis went through. I don't know if you want to add more to that?
No, I was just gonna, sorry. I was just going to reference that is the process we went through collectively, is we did do the research as a group.
Yep.
And actually go out and touch and look at all the different softwares like you're asking.
Yep.
So we looked at, these are tier-one softwares. They're the top of the industry. So Oracle would be equal to like an SAP, a Lawson, if, in that, you know, they're the best of the best of the best.
And then just to clarify, from the city process, in situations where we haven't gone with Logis's provided or recommended software, like the police dispatch item, how did we reach that determination?
That was a Dyna.
Oh, okay.
That was a Dyna's process. And then, because they provide our dispatch, it was either go along with them or find different dispatches.
But what about, you mentioned permit software, something else that was also?
Oh, that was community development.
Yep, that was community development. A lot had to do with just the integration into our other processes.
Okay.
And PIMS didn't meet that need for us. So it was either stay with PIMS and not do what we need to do and move forward, or look at a different software that would integrate, that would integrate all our systems, but also integrate our process for each department. And that's what we decided on. And of course, a staff member for community development did that research analysis and went out and demoed a number of different vendors, and then came to the conclusion that CitizenServe was the best software for our city and to integrate with our different departments.
Okay. That was really what I was wondering, is like literally what was the process? So that was the process. And here, I assume the main users of these applications are familiar with what you're recommending, and probably some of them are here, right? Like the ERP software, you both will use Kamud.
Correct. Yep, Kamud, our finance director, our finance manager would be using that part of it, in utility billing.
Okay.
Yep. And then the H.R. module, of course, our new finance, our new H.R. manager did that demonstrate, or did that demo, and I was part of the demo for the budgeting software. And yeah, I mean, there's a number of different things in there that's really going to help us continue to move forward, and especially with, you know, having lower-numbered staff.
Yep.
That's going to help that.
And then my last question, just unrelated, but the utility billing software, is that also like customer-facing? Does that affect the way people pay their bills, or?
Go ahead, Kamud.
So customers have access to invoice cloud? That is not changing.
Okay. So they're, what they log into and pay their bill with will be the same? This is behind the scenes?
So the billing software that we run here, that will change.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And I just want to add something to what my colleagues over here shared is about the Oracle Financial Solution, because I do come from Lawson environment. And when we implemented that system, we evaluated Oracle as well. And being a system designer and evaluator and user of tier-one solutions, I'm very hopeful, I'm looking forward to be moving over to Oracle. Thank you.
Ben?
I'll add, I guess I'm a little surprised there were so many, I mean, questions are always good, but some hesitance about this. This seems really obvious. I agree that we still need the big-picture I.T. evaluation, but we're in a situation where my understanding as a relatively new councilperson is that we, the city just didn't invest in I.T. for a very long time. And so, yes, we need a bigger plan, but also this one thing is moving forward. It sounds great. The people who want it are excited about it. It's expensive, but we haven't upgraded anything in, or this software, in 20 years, so it's going to cost more. I guess, to me, it seems like a no-brainer. The alternative options are terrible. So I agree with moving forward with this. I guess my one concern, I just wanted to make sure, and sorry if this was mentioned, I know I was a little late. The 10-year contract bothers me less assuming that this is a program that is getting regular updates. And I, most programs are like that nowadays, but compared to the 20-years-ago ones where they didn't update them very often. But will this, I assume we are not getting a static program that we will use for 10 years?
Correct. Both softwares are cloud-based. So what they're telling us right now, their current rollout and updates are about once a quarter, so four times a year, and that's all part of this package and included.
Perfect. Thank you.
Simon?
Yeah, thank you. Just a slight piggyback off of Ben's question. I think it, it seems like the best option. I was curious about the 10-year contract. I think all of us Timberwells fans look at the commitment we've made to Rudy Gobert, which is significant and long-term, and now we're maybe, you know, unsure at the moment. It'll probably be just fine. But is this, are all the members committed for 10 years? Is it universal? And then is there, what's the, what's the consequent? Or what, you know, if it truly just doesn't work for us, we find five years, and this is not functioning for any number of reasons. Just what's the worst-case scenario?
So the reason we negotiated a 10-year contract is to lock the pricing. The pricing is very advantageous. And the 10-year contract, even though it sounds like a long contract, and it is, it's really not when you look at the life of the software. So what I mean by that is even if you go live in year two, it's going to take a full year to go through your complete cycle of your business to get comfortable with the software or to decide it doesn't work for you, if that was the case. If you would go out and evaluate the software on your own, you're probably looking at another year to go out and do something different. Then you're looking at another year to probably 18 months of implementation. So depending on where you come in in the cycle, your 10 years will probably be up before you would make a realistic change, if that helps.
I think, I think that does help. But the other part of my question is, is this, is this the same contract all the members have, or do members have a choice between, it's just this is one contract that all the members opt into or not? That was my question.
Sorry. Yes, it is the same contract. Everybody's opting in for the same timelines, and that's what's lacking this pricing for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay. So I know you wanted to get feedback on this to Sack and Katie. Do you feel like you have enough clarity? You want more? Or to Kamud as well? Any other things that you want us to discuss?
I think I believe that we got clarity from the council. We'd like to move forward and have it have the resolution to be approved by council at the next meeting in November, because we do need to let Logis know, have our commitment to Logis by November 15.
Sounds good. All right. We're good to go. Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us. And then we can move to our next work session topic, Community Gardens. And it looks like we have, thank you so much, looks like we have Rachel and Amy with us. And I'll pass it, do I just pass it right over to Amy, Katie? Okay. Pass it to Amy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sustainability Specialist Rachel and myself are here tonight to kind of re-present some ideas around community gardens. As you remember, earlier in the year, we presented, just to get some feedback if this is a direction council wanted us to go and pursue community gardens. We got a lot of community input through phone calls, emails, open houses onsite and here. So we definitely heard from residents, and we are looking at an approach to, you know, build community gardens, kind of one by one in our city. So tonight, we kind of want to bring it back to you and let you know where we're at in the process. Okay. So why invest in community gardens? There is a real need in Richfield for community gardens. We have a lot of high-density housing. There's interest in having gardens. We do get a lot of requests. You know, as you remember, we had community gardens out off of Highway 62, closer to the airport in Fort Snelling. Since we don't have those gardens anymore, it's a need that hasn't been fulfilled. It's a cultural activity to many of our residents. It's also a climate action plan objective with food security. It's number six in our plan. With inflation and rising costs of food, it can be cost savings to grow your own food. And there's also just so many positive health and environmental impacts with being outdoors and community gardening. So in taking an input and looking at what we proposed earlier, with three gardens in one in each ward, all three are small in size. And after getting a lot of input from residents, I think that is still our big-picture goal, is to have opportunities to garden in each ward, but scaling it back with a pilot garden to start off and hopefully showcasing that to the community and using it for education. And what does a garden look like? How will it be used? How will it be operated and managed? So we're looking at implementing a small-to-medium-sized community garden with approximately 30 plots of varying sizes. We got some wonderful feedback from a resident that is, you know, single, doesn't want a big garden, but would still like to garden. So having a variety of plot sizes was great feedback that we'll be able to implement. It also raised gardens. We had wonderful feedback from the disability community as well, that a table garden would be a better model. So those that need that style can kind of wheel under and garden over the garden table. So we got a lot of input, I think, that will add value to the process. So we got a lot of input, I think that will add value to the project from residents. The financial input, I'm sorry, impact, you know, isn't too great. We're kind of looking at the different costs associated with gardens. And we will be able to do the garden for less than $10,000 using annual park maintenance fund in our capital budget. We'll have a signup process, very similar to what was proposed. It would be resident only, one plot per household. We do have bilingual staff at the community center, so that would be kind of the home base for registration. Try to do it out of that site with that staff. And also preference would be given to those that live in high density housing first. We would have the accessible garden plots available. And when people register, they would get a sticker that will go on to a stake once the gardens tilled and kind of mapped out, and that will kind of help designate their space. You know, Richfield being a built out city, that's probably the biggest challenge with this project. I think everyone wants community gardens. We didn't meet anyone who was opposed to gardens, just not necessarily in their backyard or in their favorite park or in their space. But they liked the idea of them. And so I think this pilot project's great because once they see, they can be really beautiful. It can be fun to grow food in community. We can do it well. I'm hopeful that other areas of the community be more welcoming of one of theirs, their favorite green space. So the criteria that staff established, you know, it was very important that we have adequate parking. When staff went out and we looked at community gardens in Minneapolis, Rosemount, Bloomington, we never saw more than two to three gardeners at any one time. So we're not, you know, expecting droves of gardeners and lots of parking, but we would need some parking, whether it's off street or in a parking lot. A space for a water tank, enough space is a challenge in Richfield. A lot of our parks have so many things going on. One more thing is probably too many for some of them. So having the space to do it's important, enough sun, the right soil. Several of our parks are very wet, some are built on former construction dumps and things like that. That would be a good space for garden. Accessibility is really important to make sure, you know, we have accessible parking sidewalks and that infrastructure for people with disabilities. And also making sure that it fits into the neighborhood aesthetic as well. You know, one criteria too that popped up as we started researching more too, it's just underground infrastructure. There's a lot going on under the city that would prohibit what goes on top of the city. So we looked at that as well. And one of the locations that we've always had proposed was Veterans Park in Ward Three. And it fits, you know, most all of the criteria. And the site that we are looking at is directly kind of northeast of the Veterans Memorial. It sits behind the ice arena. There's a kind of a big open space behind the arena that right now we have kind of a no mow area part of the year. Sometimes it is mowed for different events. But there is an adequate space behind there for the plots. One nice thing is, you know, if it's the criteria, there's parking available. We'll be able to do a bump out and have accessible parking and accessible sidewalk to get to the tabletop gardens. It's visible too. I know some people had concerns about potentially, you know, people taking vegetables or getting into people's gardens. I think it's such a visible space too, hopefully that would deter people from damaging anyone's gardens.
So in looking at this proposed garden site, we took the next step of getting the soil tested at the site to make sure that, you know, it would work for a garden. And so we took soil samples to the University of Minnesota, to their soil testing lab, samples from the site at Vets and also samples from soil that we could potentially bring in to amend the site. And that soil will be coming from Fort Snelling, which is where our city leaves currently go. And they have, you know, an unofficial, it's a compost pile, but it's not like where our citywide organics goes, so to speak. So it's a compost amendment that we could bring back that the city has already helped create, which is kind of also a, a full circle picture. And so we had that supply tested as well to see, you know, what the, the makeup of that is. The, we got the results back, they do look pretty good for a vegetable garden. We asked for further interpretation from the university, just so they could kind of put it into plain words for us. My first time seeing a soil test, so we needed a little bit of help with that. But it all looks pretty good. There is a slightly higher than optimum, quote unquote, optimum pH. And there are various ways to amend that in the soil. It's not an issue per se, it's not, you know, a, a clear barrier, you cannot have a garden here. It's just like, oh, well, in order to optimize it, you can add this, you know, amendment or this level of compost or things like that. So we haven't decided, obviously, as this is a proposed site and we're looking for feedback tonight, we haven't decided what all the steps would be to amend the soil on the site. But we are still confident in the soil results and then our ability to amend it and bring in compost and also have that as part of the whole full circle with organics and, you know, growing your own food and, and all that other stuff that we've talked about before. We did not attach the soil test results, but of course, if any council members are interested in, in reading a soil test, just let me know and I'm happy to pass it along. So then getting back into engagement, this is a slide from our previous presentation. The difference is we have obviously done the onsite engagement. We had two open houses, as Amy mentioned, one in this room, one onsite. Both were great, had a, a pretty good turnout, about 15 people total, mostly visiting the onsite open house, which was even better because people were able to see the site and ask their questions and things like that. So I pulled together some of the information or feedback that we received. Amy already mentioned some of it with the table beds, as opposed to, if you remember in the first presentation, we had a picture of Bloomington's raised beds, which are, they're not ground, ground level, but they're, you know, raised off of the ground level, foot, foot and a half. And so as Amy mentioned, hearing from members of the, the disabled community about table beds and having back and forth dialogue with how Public Works could make those in-house and things like that. So keeping that conversation going. Chris Link was very excited about hearing that feedback. And then the plot sizes, of course, looking at providing two sizes, the regular, which would be about 10 by 15, and then a smaller one, TBD if that would be 10 by 10, 10 by 12, still figuring those logistics out. And then the other piece of community feedback is working with residents who have already expressed interest in cultivating pollinator habitat and having a bit of that site. Bit of the site, so like the north blue line by that path, potentially having a bit of a pollinator barrier. So it, it separates the gardens from the path, it's aesthetically attractive, obviously it's great. You have that, that connection between the pollinators and, and the plants that you're, that folks would be growing. And then, of course, you know, tying it into greater pollinator education, which we have a lot of residents in town who are passionate about. And so we've had conversations with those residents about helping plan the garden. And that's led into conversations about, you know, stormwater. It, it had a really good conversation that, that open house at Vets that Councilmember Supple actually attended. So I'm sure she was a part of those conversations as well, so. At that specific open house, there were multiple residents who do live in multi-unit housing who came and expressed strong interest to the point where I was asked when and how they could register. And we kind of had to pump the brakes a little bit, but I did, you know, we did get that feedback from them. Just super excited as folks, some of them who had current space at their multi-unit building, but not adequate in their, you know, they wanted more gardening space. And some who didn't have any at all, talked to one resident who has a balcony and that's it. And so she is very limited into what she can grow and she's super excited about this potential, which is obviously one of the main reasons that this was being proposed. And then, of course, you know, talking, as Amy mentioned, we didn't talk to anybody who's against gardens. There was very clear multiple people, everybody said, we, we are for gardening. But there were a few residents who are against various locations. I did put numbers in here because I did think it was important to show kind of the numbers of how many were against, whether that was strongly against or just, you know, would prefer not to have it somewhere versus how many were for it at the proposed site at Vets or had no concerns about the location. Here's just some pictures of the comment cards. I mean, these are literally, except for the words COVID safe activity, these are all written by residents. The resident who is on the Health Commission wanted me to write and share that she is very for gardening as it is a COVID safe activity. So this is just, yeah, it's a bunch of comments you can see, obviously, for and then some concerns, you know, with materials that could be used onsite by residents or, or things like that. So it just kind of echoes everything that, that we have talked about in both of our presentations here. And then these are just not comment cards, but these are parts of emails that we received. So again, just people, you know, for and against, whether it's location or, you know, just excited about signing up, et cetera, et cetera, so more public comments. And then just again, these pictures we've shown before, this is the stake and the sticker that Amy mentioned. It just kind of helps keep track of, of plots. And then, of course, we had a pretty good lengthy conversation with the folks at the open house about fencing and, you know, what would be required. Of course, you know, the height limits and things like that, people would be concerned about, you know, having six foot tall fencing and things like that. So it's already started some really good conversations. And then this is a new picture we wanted to show you. Previously, we showed you a water tank that was built, it was, you know, cylindrical, it was built on pavers kind of thing, it was kind of elevated. It had a presence. And, you know, we've heard some people didn't care and some people were a little concerned. And we found another model, this is actually in Rosemount, it is obviously closer to the ground. We'll have to figure out if it works as much for accessibility reasons, of course. But so far, this does look to be another option that might be easier, cheaper, less of a physical visual presence for folks who are concerned about how a big water tank in the middle of a park might look. So there are other options out there that we're looking at too. And that's pretty much it, so open to any questions or feedback.
Comments, questions, Ben?
Thank you. In general, I think this is great, glad it's moving forward. I, I mean, I didn't, didn't have any concerns with the original proposal, but given the feedback we've gotten, I think this is great. To that last question, I'm wondering, since there is, I believe it's like a pump station or there's that shed building that's already there. I would think that, and especially I would assume we want the water close enough that the people at the accessible tables are not going to the other end of the garden. I guess I'm less concerned about height if it's next to a one story building already anyway. I think I had, otherwise, just general, general support. And I, oh, my other question was the, a couple of people in the comments mentioned $45. I'm sure that is not a set in stone detail yet, but I guess I would, I would not expect this to be a money making venture, probably even a money losing venture. We subsidize many of our recreation amenities. And especially if it's only 30 plots, I would think we'd want to prioritize making it really approachable rather than worrying too much about covering the costs when it's such small amounts.
I can comment, I'm.
Go ahead, Rachel.
So yeah, so with the water tank specifically, we obviously have not set any sort of place. But yeah, there is this building right here, it would make sense, it's going to depend on, you know, the grade of the area. I believe there's a slight incline over here. But we were kind of thinking over here, having the building as kind of that shelter, especially, you know, to kind of block some of the sun maybe. But making it close to the accessible plots, which also have not been, you know, finalized to a location. But of course, we're not going to have the water tank over here and the accessible plots over here or anything like that. So that's definitely a good point. And then, yeah, regards to the price, definitely not set, the $45, I believe, and Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, but that was, people were asking about, you know, a registration price. And we were explaining, you know, the, in our research, I believe as we had talked in our last meeting, a registration amount does tend to keep people gardening, you know, make sure that the plots are full, it has that sense of ownership, et cetera. It does cover some, there are some costs, you know, but you're right, a lot of this is, is for the good of the project. But $45, I think, was also in line with what the previous community garden was around. So we're not even, you know, accounting for inflation or anything like that. And then we've also proposed having, there's a recreation program that we might be able to, or existing folks can use, and we might be able to have, or allow them to use the dollars that they receive through that program to pay for part or full of, of the plot fee. So really trying to make it as accessible as possible, as affordable as possible, understanding that there are some costs, this is not, this is not a project to make money at all, so.
Other questions or comments? Sean?
Just overall, I'm, I'm excited about this. I'm a little disappointed that we're backing off a larger project, but I appreciate staff coming with a more ambitious project. And I know you, you took a lot of negative feedback regarding it. So I appreciate you bringing us an idea that I think met our values. And this is a, meeting our values and being practical and getting it done. So I really like this starting point. My only question was about that incentive to keep gardening. If people just don't, if they sign up for a plot and they never use it and you have a waiting list, is there a point at which like you can say this is abandoned, it's going to the next person? Okay.
That's a great question. And yes, one process that we've looked at in particular is Bloomington's. And they have a, they have a date cutoff where if you're not, there's no evidence that you're gardening by a set date, which I think is like maybe a month, month and a half after the season starts, then you forfeit your plot and waiting list, you know, you go back and things like that. So yeah, we want to make sure that if we're, you know, if the plots are being created, they're being used. And so obviously, there's communication ahead of time, you know, checking in, hey, you know, you, you got this plot, are you gardening? You know, that kind of stuff. But yeah, definitely not letting anything just sit there.
Alright, thanks.
Other comments or questions? Simon?
No, no real comments other than thank you and it's exciting. And I appreciate, I appreciate that, that, that we're moving forward and, and timely, even though if it's a pilot, that we're, we're not slowing down the project at all. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary?
First of all, I'm fully in support of this, I think it's a great idea. And it was really interesting listening to the comments at the open house. And I was pleased that, that we're fulfilling a need for people that are living in multi-family dwellings so that they have a place to garden, because I know I appreciate gardening myself and I would like to see that passed on. And I was intrigued by the table garden idea because it sounds great. Once, once I heard it, it was like, oh yeah, that'd be fabulous. The question I had, you talked about that strip of pollinator friendly area. Would that also help with the concern about overspray from chemicals and things? Is that like a buffer or are we going to have to change what sprayed around there? That came up at the open house, I'll let you answer that and I have one other question.
Yeah, so we currently, the maintenance plan at the Veterans Memorial, we do spray around the memorial itself. So we could create a greater buffer between that area and the garden itself. But the pollinator garden would be on the north side, so it wouldn't be in between the, the garden and the memorial. It'd be on the other.
It follows the arrow this way. Whereas the pollinators would propose to be that way.
Okay, that makes sense, I had my directions switched. And then the other one, you talk about amending the soil, which got me to thinking, are there rules like as far as fertilizer and stuff that the gardeners can use? And does the city do some of the fertilizing or just amending the soil, or how does that all work?
Yeah, that's a great question. Obviously, final details yet to be determined. But as we talked with folks who joined the open house and we're, we were already as staff thinking of this before, but really heard from residents, the desire to not have, you know, chemicals, non-organic fertilizers, that kind of thing onsite, which we totally appreciate and agree with. And so that's kind of the direction we're going with right now. And our, the rules as we start to draft them, you know, is definitely not those, you know, chemical fertilizers round up, all that kind of stuff, not allowing that. The amendment to the soil is different and that is something that the city would be doing. We wouldn't ask residents to amend their own plot or bring in their own compost or anything like that. And so that's where we would bring in that compost amendment from Fort Snelling, from our city leaves and, and other stuff, and use that as an amendment. There are other, you know, organic fertilizers, more natural fertilizers that don't have those chemical connotations that we could use or, you know, organic based amendments, whether it's, you know, like looking at potassium or phosphorus or nitrogen or whatever. And so I think, you know, we have to figure out those details based on the soil test results. But what we're looking. out those details based on the soil test results. Um, but what we're looking at right now for, for rules for those gardening is, you know, no, no chemical fertilizers like that. And then for the city with the amendments, what we're looking at right now is the organic compost that we have helped create, so.
Thank you. This is a great project.
One piece of feedback you who might get from some of our neighbors at Veterans Park is just concerns about wildlife. And one thing we've been reentering with them is, the current area is, is really mowed weeds that we mow, and that a garden will provide more biodiversity for insects and birds than what we currently have. Um, so that might be a comment we hear, and it's, it's something we've been trying to educate them on, that what we're proposing is actually going to be better than what's there now.
Thank you. Other comments from folks? Okay, all right. Thank you so much for that update. Um, before I adjourn, Katie, do we have any other things? Those are the two items? Uh, no?
We don't have anything more for the work session.
Okay, thank you. I'll adjourn our work session. Thank you.